Twenty-five reorganizational meeting for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Oh, we got two. Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. As I stated before, we have a bunch of appointments to go through. Take care. Various things that you can see on the agenda. So first, we're going to start with public comment because we always have public comment in the beginning and toward the end of the meeting. So would there anyone in the audience like to make a comment? Okay.
Doris, the camera. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, hearing none. Let's move on. Okay, so the first thing we have is the appointment of Deputy Mayor. I am appointing David Carnwright as the Deputy Mayor. I've worked with Dave for, he's been on the board since 2012. Worked closely with him for a long time. Dave's got his ear to the ground, as Jim would say, former Mayor Jim Galliano would say. Dave's in a meeting at any day that ends in Y. Very engaged with the community, so I'm appointing Dave as Deputy Mayor. Next up, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Megan Gishwin as the Village Treasurer for a two-year term ending April 5th, 2027, at an annual stipend of $9,154.60. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, I'm making a motion to appoint Megan Gishwin as the Deputy Village Clerk for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026, at the annual salary of $55,692. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm making a motion to appoint Manny Carmona as the Code Enforcement, excuse me, Code Enforcement Officer for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026, at a salary of $41.82 per hour. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm making a motion to appoint Steve Dixon as Chief of Police for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026, at the annual salary of $35,000. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That takes care of those. Okay. I'm making a motion to appoint Megan Gishwin as Deputy Tax Collector for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Halverson as Superintendent of Public Works for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026, at the annual salary of $113,678. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Excuse me, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm making a motion to appoint Michael Trainer as the Superintendent of Water for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026, at the annual salary of $106,453. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm making a motion to set the 2025-2026 salary for Janelle Strong, excuse me, Stong, at $27.54 per hour. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to set the 2025-2026 salary for Jacqueline Masterson at $20.40 per hour. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to set the 2025-2026 salary for Stephanie Zagarrius, is that the correct way?
Zagarrius.
Zagarrius, at $27.54 per hour. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm making a motion to appoint Kurt Han as the Disaster Control Officer for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to set the 2025-2026 salary for Kathleen Christensen, our historian, at $1,850. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. I make a motion to appoint Megan Gishwin as the Deputy Vital Statistics Registrar for a one-year term ending April 6th, 2026. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, for Attorney for the Village. Um, let me see here. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint the law firm of Catania Mahan and Ryder P L L C as Attorney for the Village for the fiscal year 2025-2026, so to serve as the Village Ethics Board, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with their April 7th, 2025 proposal. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I, we RFP'd them last year and I don't have the proposal in front of me, but I'm...
Yeah, I'll just, well, Joe can tell you, but the bottom line, yeah, the only difference is is that they raised the hourly fee by the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which was 6% over a two-year period.
3% and 3%.
3% and 3%. So the hourly rate went from 235 to 250, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? Bill, did you want to take a closer look?
No, no, I'm, I'm...
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Pitengaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers as Engineer for the Village for fiscal year 2024-2025, to serve as the Village Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and for special projects as assigned in accordance with their March 31st, 2025 proposal. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? So they raise, it's toward the back. Okay. Their fees for the principal were $225 an hour, project manager $210 an hour, senior electrical engineer $195, program manager $165. A few of the positions, environmental engineer $165. They've done an excellent job for us in the past. I could say, at least from my perspective, they've done an excellent job. Anybody have anything to say about Pitengaro and Deutsch?
On the grant coordinator piece, we, I don't know if we budgeted this year for the, because we had put some money into a grant coordinator line for us.
Right, and we didn't, and we never even used it.
Right.
So we still have that in the grant.
But that's money that we would use to pay them for those services.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this... All right, now, Auditor for the Village. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Nugent and Hauser as Auditor for the Village for fiscal year 2025-2026, and to authorize the firm to conduct a full audit of the Village financial statements for the fiscal year ending February 28th, 2026, at an estimated cost of $23,250 for the regular audit, which is the full audit, plus $4,000 for a single audit related to receiving federal funds of more than $750,000 during a fiscal year that ended February 28th, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So that's New York forward money, I assume?
FEMA money.
The FEMA money, yes. And they, if people recall, residents recall, what we do in regards to our audit, we don't do a full audit every year because it's quite expensive. We do a compilation audit. So we pay probably a quarter of the price. So every about three years, we have a full audit done. So that's the largest expense that they're going to have for us. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, so let's moving on to the Planning, Zoning, and Ethics Board. All right, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Lee Murphy to the Planning Board for a five-year term, expiring on April 1st, 2030, subject to him being sworn in within 30 days of this appointment. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All I can say is that Lee has been on the board for, Doug, would you even know? Twenty?
2004.
Okay, yeah.
2004, it says here.
Okay, very good, and he wants to continue, so I'm sorry, did I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Matthew Bannon to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term expiring April 1st, 2030, subject to him being sworn in within 30 days of this appointment. May I have a second?
Second.
Matt's been on the board for at least...
Thirteen.
Thirteen years, okay. Now you're looking at it, yeah.
Since 2000.
Since 2000, okay. You already gave a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I'll make a motion to appoint Brandy Schaefer McLendon as the Ethics Board, as a Ethics Board Member for a three-year term ending April 3rd, 2028. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Village Board Committee Appointments. I moved things around this year a little bit, so everyone has an opportunity to do something different. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to appoint the following committee appointments. So noting that the first name listed is the chairperson. So for building, I'm going to go through the whole list and then we'll just vote once. Is that okay with everyone? All right, so for building grounds and parks, we have Bill Brain and Lori Beth Paleyoda. For public safety, which is police and fire, Dave Carnwright and Lori Beth Paleyoda. For insurance and public utilities, Dave Carnwright and whoever's going to be the appointee who's going to replace me. For personnel and labor relations, we have Bill and whoever's going to be appointed. For public works, we have Dave Carnwright and Bill Brain. For sanitation and recycling, we have Lori Beth Paleyoda and the person who will be appointed. Recreation Summer Youth Program, we have Lori Beth Paleyoda and Bill Brain. For grants and economic development, we have... Now we have Dave Carnwright and myself right now. But I don't know why, hold on one second, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. That one, it's not your four dollars. I thought I had it with me. All right, so for right now, we can, we can, well, let's just keep it right now. Kane and Carnwright. For the Liaison to the Water Committee, that is going to be the appointee. For the Liaison to the Cornwall Conservation Committee, that's Dave Carnwright. Liaison to the Dunningu Committee remains Bill, Bill Brain. And Liaison to the Climate Smart Committee, that's Lori Beth Paleyoda. Can I get a second for those appointments?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Audit Committee, which includes reviewing vouchers, and the Water Committee consists of the Mayor and the Board of Trustees. So I'll make a motion to accept that, those individuals, meaning us as the Audit Committee. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Workplace Violence Prevention Committee. I'll make a motion to approve the following appointments to the Workplace Violence Prevention Committee. All right, we've got Bill Brain as the Village Board Liaison, Michael Trainer as the Water Superintendent, David Halverson as the Public Works Superintendent, Donald Bright as Water Department Employee Representative, Tommy Lyons as the DPW Employee Representative, and Steve Dixon as the Police Chief. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Safety Committee. I'll make a motion to approve the following appointments to the Safety Committee. Eric Van De Mark, who is the DPW Employee Representative, Richard Smith, the Water Department Employee Representative, Robert Thompson, the Police Department Representative, Michael Trainer, the Water Superintendent, and David Halverson, Public Works Superintendent. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Board of Fire Commission Appointments. Appoint, Appointments. I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Rick Giampolo as the Chairperson of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Board of Fire Commissioners for a three-year term, expiring on April 1st, 2027. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Crossing Guard. So I'm going to make a motion to set the...
Mr. Mayor, I think that's 2028. So Rick's appointment, three-year term, Rick Giampolo, it would expire April 3rd, 2028.
April 3rd. Oh, I got it, okay. So I'll redo, I can redo the motion. I'll make a motion to reappoint Rick Giampolo as the Chairperson of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Board of Fire Commissioners for a three-year term expiring on April 1st, 2028.
It might be April 3rd, if that's...
3rd, 2028, okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll make a motion to set the 2025-2026 Village School Crossing Guard Salary at $16 per hour. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
With respect to meetings of the Village Board of Trustees, the starting, the schedule in regards to our meetings, the starting time will be 7:00 PM. Work sessions will be the second Monday of each month, except October, when it will be the first Monday, and July and August, when it's, when it is not in session because of the summer season. The proviso to that is if we choose to do so, the past few years, we've consolidated the work session and the regular stated meeting in July and August. If we choose to do so, we may have, we may tee up a work session. Business meetings are the third Monday of each month, except January, February, and March, when they will be on the fourth Monday. And the Village Board will meet with the Attorney for Village, for the Village at 6:00 PM prior to business meetings for an attorney-client session if necessary. And that is not open to the public. The agenda is, the Mayor will prepare, I will prepare a tentative agenda and distribute them to the trustees on the Thursday before work sessions and business meetings. Agendas will be posted on the Village website on Thursday before meetings. I will, the Mayor will receive input from the trustees and make any adjustments on the day of the meetings and include them in the black binder available to the public. With respect to public comment, the Village Board will provide a 15-minute public comment period at the beginning and the end of business meetings. After providing their names and addresses, speakers may address the Village Board once on Village Matters for three minutes. During work sessions, the Board may invite persons to provide input on matters it is considering. Now, with respect to work sessions and business meetings and village holidays, I'll just do that as per document.
It's be posted on the site, I assume, correct?
All right. Moving on to audit and employment of claims. All right. I'm going to introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Be resolved that the Board of Trustee hereby adopts the following policy for purchases and payments of claims. The Treasurer or Deputy Treasurer are preauthorized to make payment in advance of audit claims for the following reoccurring charges: public utility service, postage, freight, express charges, health and dental insurance, principal and interest on bond anticipation notes, monthly lease agreements, and petty cash reimbursements. Second, all vouchers and claims of the value of less than $250 are preauthorized for payment by the Treasurer or Deputy Treasurer, subject to the condition that a proper voucher be signed by the appropriate department head. Such voucher and claim is subject to review by the Mayor, Trustees, or Treasurer at any time or before or after payment. All vouchers and claims of the value of more than, value of $250 or more, but less than $1,000, shall require the approval by two members of the Audit Committee as designated by the Board of Trustees. All vouchers and claims of the value of $1,000 or greater require an approval by three members of the Audit Committee as designated by the Board of Trustees. In accordance with the Village procurement policy, all purchases of less than $1,000 are within the discretion of the apartment, of the appropriate department head. However, the department head shall be responsible to verify that the purchase is necessary and it's consistent with the budget adopted by the Board of Trustees. All purchases for $1,000 or more must be made with the approval of the Village Board in accordance with Village adopted procurement policy as set forth herein. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll introduce the following resolution regarding designating depositories, and I'll move for its adoption. Whereas pursuant to Village Law 4-1412, subsection 3, subsection 2, the Village Board must designate banks or trust companies in which the Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, Clerk, Deputy Clerk can receive or taxes made deposit funds received by them. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Village Board designates the Orange County Bank and Trust Company, N I class, and J P Morgan Chase are the official depositories of the Village. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Signature cards. I'll introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Be it resolved that the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer hereby authorize from time to time for and on behalf of the Village to make and sign checks and agreements relating to any of the accounts maintained by the Village with the bank. The Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer of Village and B and hereby are authorized and directed to certify to banks the names of the present officers of the Village, authorized to sign for it, and the offices respectively held by them. The Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer are authorized and directed to certify to the banks that this resolution has been adopted, is in full force and effect, and is in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the Village. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, procurement policy is quite lengthy, I'll just read off portions of it. Whereas the general municipal law... Hold on one second. Let's check something. We're... All right, we have to, we have to readopt the procurement policy, right? Or are we just...
No, you should readopt it, yeah.
All right. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to readopt our procurement policy. I'll read off the relevant portions of it. So whereas general municipal law 104-B requires every village to adopt an internal policy and procedures governing all procurement of goods and services, not subject to the bidding requirements of G M L 103 or any other law. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Village of Cornwall and Hudson does hereby adopt the following procurement policies and procedures. It consists of... One, two, three, it consists of seven guidelines with respect to the purchase of supplies and materials that will exceed $20,000, public works and or service contracts over $35,000. There is a purchase of goods on a single item with a, an attendant chart, purchase of labor and materials or public work contracts, also with a, with a chart. So for instance, the, if the public works contract is from the amount of $0 to $999, it's preauthorized at the discretion of the purchaser. If it's from $1,000 to $999, it needs two written quotes. If it's $10,000 to $34,999, it needs three, three quotes. Let's see. Any, any written request for proposals shall be described, describe the desired goods quantity and particulars of delivery. Guideline four, the lowest responsible proposal quote shall be awarded unless it's determined that another proposal or quote provides the best value to the Village. That described in the Village Code. Guideline five, a good faith effort should be, shall be made to obtain the required number of proposals quotes. If the purchaser is unable to obtain that, that number of proposal or quotes, then the purchaser shall document the attempt made. Lastly, the last two guidelines, guideline six, no solicitation of proposal quotes shall be required under the following circumstances: acquisition of professional services, emergencies, sole source situations, goods purchases from other agencies for blind or severely handicapped. There's a number of subsections here. And lastly, guideline number seven, the policy shall be reviewed annually by the Village Board at its reorganizational meeting. So I'll move to adopt the procurement policy as per document. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
On the professional services?
Yes.
Is that specifically defined as the professional services we contract for from attorney and engineer and auditor? Or there are others, other potential things in that category?
Let's see. For...
For instance, if we needed to hire a real estate appraiser, a real estate broker, you know, generally, I don't think it's defined, but generally, professional fees are those people with licenses, right? So our engineers, our attorneys, or real estate appraiser, or someone like that. Really, just because we're really adopting a policy that's consistent with the state purchasing guidelines. So, you know, sometimes we have to be guided by case law or Attorney General's opinions, but generally, professional licensed services are exempt.
Thank you.
All in, do we, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to accept our fund balance policy. The purpose of the Cornwall and Hudson Board of Trustees recognizes that maintaining a fund balance is essential to the preservation of the financial integrity of the Village and is fiscally advantageous for the Village and taxpayers. This policy establishes goals and provides guidance concerning the desired level of fund balance maintained by the Village to mitigate financial risk that can occur from unseen revenue fluctuations, unanticipated expenditures, and similar circumstances. It goes on to discuss the policy, the committed fund balance. The Board of Trustees must pass a resolution to establish, modify, or rescind the fund balance commitment. Talks to, speaks to the assigned fund balance, the minimal unassigned fund balance, the order of expenditure funds, and it defines the same. I move to adopt it as per document. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, mileage allowance, we're getting there. I'm going to introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the Village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the Village. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees shall approve reimbursement for staff, officers, and employees at the same rate as authorized by the Internal Revenue Service, which is currently 70 cents per mile. And this resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Attendance at schools, I'll make the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the following activities will occur during the official year. The annual meeting conducted by the New York State Conference of Mayors and other municipal officers for municipal officials. The annual meeting conducted by the New York State Association of Towns. The training school for fiscal officers and municipal clerks conducted by the New York State Conference of Mayors. The Orange County Department of Planning Educational Classes and monthly meetings of the Orange County Association of Towns and Villages and Cities. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that attendance by certain municipal officials and employees at one or more of these meetings, conferences, or schools benefits the village. Now therefore be it resolved, the following officers and employees are hereby authorized to attend the foregoing activities. Mayor, trustees, clerks, treasurer, Department of Public Works Superintendent, Water Superintendent, the Code Enforcement Officer, and the Chief of Police. And this resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is the, I guess the fire chief is not included, cause...
Do what? No. Training schools for fiscal... There's nothing that you guys... Not, any, well, Charlie, you tell me what school... Yeah, they have their own budget and, and when you do go to schools, you end up, I, I know that the trainees when they go to schools, but I'm talking about like yourself or, or Mike, if you're going for some specialized training at the senior level. That, you don't come to us for authorization for that, right? You let us know? Cause I don't think, I, I don't remember the one that you guys have been going to, have gone to, excuse me.
I don't know if we're supposed to go to you for authorization, but we have not.
But there might be classes at the N I com that would be pertinent to the Village Run Fire Department.
You come to us for reimbursement? I mean, I think this is more to my thinking of reimbursement, right?
So, you know, travel wise, we typically take the chief's buggy, so there's no reimbursement for that. Any, any fee for conferences or, I have not stayed overnight anywhere, but that would come out of our budget.
Okay. Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The last thing is, well, not the last, but with respect to fee schedules. All the fees, all the fees that are currently in place are gonna remain with the exception of the following, which Mike has provided. So I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the fee schedule. Hold on. It's the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department Fee Schedule, which has, has some changes to it. These fees, the reflected changes are in, with respect to village connections, outside village connections, village fire lines, outside village fire lines, fire, not fire hydrants, and administrative fees. And I'll move for that adoption as per document. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Noting that it's not water rates, it's ancillary costs related to water connections.
Thank you for that clarification.
I believe we need to adopt the other fees as well?
No, cause these haven't changed.
They haven't changed.
Well, so this was the discussion. If we have one, essentially, we have one schedule of fees in its entirety. So my understanding is that the only changes were as Jim just read. So that's the new fee schedule for 2025. I think maybe what you're, what you're suggesting is put everything on one, on one document, whether the building department fees, water fees, whatever they might be. We should probably just have them all consolidated in one document, so we don't have any confusion going forward.
So going forward, so for, for now, why don't I just do this? For now, we're just moving to adopt, as I said before, all other fees. All of the fees and rate charges as Bill mentioned remain the same with the exception of the water, the water fee schedule changes that I just detailed and I'm, I'm moving to adopt as per document. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's, next year we'll, we'll do it in one, yeah, we've never actually, I don't think we ever did it as...
One document?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know what you're saying, an overall fee schedule, and then each one is Water Department, D P W, Code Enforcement. I, I, I know what you're saying, gotcha. All right. Let's see.
And the whole, not to belabor it, the whole point being then at your reorg, you have all the fees in front of you.
Right.
If you need to make any changes, you do annually, that's all.
Right. What's, with respect to department goals. The Village Department's heads have provided the Village Board with their department goals that they would like to accomplish during the 2024, 2025 fiscal year, and these goals will be reviewed. As for official newspaper, I'm gonna make a motion to declare the Cornwall Local to be the official weekly newspaper and the Times Held Record and the New York Post as the official daily newspapers of the village for official year 2024, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. We added in the New York Post because, Doris, you can explain, there was a, a time when we had to post something and we had a ti, we had a, a compressed timeframe to get it done. So the New York Post would be used as our third alternative.
In the pinch.
In the pinch.
The local is the, is the default?
The local's the number one.
Record is second?
The record is second, yes.
We just had an issue last, last fiscal year.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now let's move on to resolutions. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the Board, Village Board Meaning Minutes of March 24th, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Everybody here?
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Seeker, yeah.
That's not Seeker.
This is not, wait a minute, hold on, I have it, hold on. Oh, that's, yeah, that's it.
This is Washington.
Oh, that's Washington, wait there, hold on. Oh, very good, okay. Let me move this over here. This, 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 they can't, okay, hold on. Oh, okay. See, you're right, had two copies of the same one. Thank you, Doris, all right. Okay, I'm gonna make the following motion. Resolution of the Village Board of, Village Board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Declaration of Lead Agency, Adoption of Classification of Action Issuance and of Neg, Negative Declaration for the Dock Hill Road Connector Trail Project Pursuant to SECR. I'm not gonna read the entire document, I'll just read off portions of it. Whereby the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Village Board has reviewed the grant application. Ancillary documents prepared for the design and construction of the multi-use path to better provide access between Dunnyhew Farm and Dunnyhew Memorial Park, as well as additional opportunities for outdoor recreation. The project is, is funded in part, whereas the project is funded in part by a recreational trail program, R T P grant, and a New York Forward grant. And whereas the project is located across several properties in the vicinity of forty-two Bayview Avenue within C R one zoning district in the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, County of Orange, State of New York. These properties consisting of the following section, block, and lot numbers. Whereas the Village Board has reviewed a short environmental assessment form for the project dated July 27th, 2023, with Part One completed. And now therefore be it resolved, this follows. The Village Board hereby adopts and incorporates the recitation and statement set forth above as is, as if fully set forth and resolved herein. Be it further resolved that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Village Board hereby determines that the proposed action constitutes an action that is subject to SECR. The proposed action does not involve a federal agency. The notice of intent for proposed action was appropriately circulated to other interested and involved agencies, and the proposed action is appropriately classified as an unlisted action. Be it further resolved, the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Village Board hereby declares itself to be the lead agency with respect to SECR review of the project. And be it further resolved that the determination of the significance of considered a negative declaration made pursuant to Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law, the Village Board hereby adopts and incorporates the findings set forth in the notice of determination of non-significance dated April 7th. Be it further resolved, the Village Mayor is hereby authorized to file any and all appropriate notices of the intent of this resolution is carried out. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Mayor, just, you do have to execute the E A F? And the neg debt, it's all together.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, and lastly, we're gonna amend the meaning minutes. And Doris, okay. Great. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to amend the April 7th, 2024 reorganizational minutes. Not 2025, 2024. I'm making a motion to amend the reorganizational meeting minutes from April 7th, 2024 to state that Paula Howard's annual salary of seventy thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars as Deputy Village Treasurer was incorrect and should have been sixty-six thousand and ninety-one dollars, which is the salary Paula Howard received in last year's budget. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the reorganizational meetings from April 7th, 2024 to state that Megan Gishwin's annual salary of fifty-nine thousand one hundred dollars as Deputy Village Clerk was incorrect and should have been fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars, which is the salary Megan Gishwin received in last year's budget. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't, I didn't hear this one. We, I had interrupted you on the fire reappointment. The next resolution was for the summer playground, the camp, Olmstead?
We're getting to that, we're getting to that. The appointment of, you mean liaisons to the?
No.
Oh, well, I'm giving that information now.
Okay.
In regards to the summer camp.
Okay.
Yes. First, let me open up public comment. Is there anyone in the room would I like to make a comment?
Sorry.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, Bill, that's the, well, that's the pseudo one, okay. So this is a very lengthy, why don't we do this, Joe? Why don't you give us a brief description of this resolution, and then we'll adopt it per document.
Sure. So the board is familiar with a certain property in the village which has fallen into a state of disrepair. The, both with respect to the exterior maintenance of the property and based upon an inspection from our Code Enforcement Officer, also with respect to the interior of the property. We have two sections of our village code and one section of the real property maintenance law, the New York State law that applies and that the village is going to be conducting hearings pursuant to. The first is chapter sixty-one of our code, which authorizes the board after hearing to commit to the cleanup of exterior maintenance. The second would be a public hearing pursuant to chapter one twenty of the village code, which authorizes the board, again, after a hearing, to make a determination with respect to whether or not it will order repairs to the interior of the home. The third thing that this resolution does is that it also schedules a hearing with respect to the New York State Property Maintenance Law, which essentially provides that any time a property has become unsafe or uninhabitable, the property owner must be given due process by this board for the, before the board can then make a determination as to whether or not the property needs to be condemned. So with this, and this resolution also goes to the secret process, designates this board as the lead agency for secret purposes. So in sum, what this resolution does is it schedules a public hearing on chapter six, the procedures in chapter sixty-one, the procedures in chapter one twenty, and the procedures under the New York State Property Maintenance Law. The property owner will be called in for a hearing before this board, at which time an order can be made pursuant to all three of those regulations.
Very good, that was very succinct. So, all right. I am going to propose a resolution of the Village Board of those of Cornwall and Hudson scheduling a public hearing to order the abatement of property violations and for the potential condemnation of the property located at ten Washington Street and setting a time or place for a public hearing with respect to said order. I'm not gonna read off the entire document, just select the portions of it. Whereas it's necessary for the public health, safety, and general welfare of residents of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson to keep properties clean and free from vermin, noxious weeds, and disease-bearing insects, and properly maintain properties so that they are kept free of nuisances, hazards, debris, and litter, and where unsafe building poses a threat to life and property in the Village of Cornwall and Hudson is necessary for such unsafe building to be repaired or demolished or removed. And whereas the Village Board is obligated to take action to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of village residents by requiring the properties be properly maintained. Whereas the Village Code Enforcement Officer has made several inspections of the property located at ten Washington Street after numerous complaints from neighbors and previously notified the property owner and occupants in writing of all violations and provided ample opportunity to cure those same violations. Where on or about October 23rd, 2023, the Code Enforcement Officer issued a written order to remedy, giving notice of property maintenance violations. And whereas on September 25th, 2024, the Code Enforcement Officer issued a summons and complaint, giving further notice of the same property maintenance violations. And whereas the Village Board is empowered under chapter twenty, sixty-one and one twenty of the village code to order property owners to obey, cure, remove, prevent, or desist from violations of the Village Property Maintenance Code. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Village Board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to this action in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, Part seventeen, six seventeen of the regulations implementing SECR, since there are no other agents that have, have authority to approve the action. And that this is a type-two action pursuant to SECR Part six seventeen point five, that the Village Board of, we have resolved and determined that the Village Board, the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, that the property located at section one oh seven, block five, lot ten within the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, known as ten Washington, ten Washington Street, is being kept in violations of chapter sixty-one and one twenty of the village code and is therefore a threat to public and safety, general welfare of the community. And so it is hereby ordered that the owner and occupants of said property, Kathy Lynn Sudo and all other occupants of the property, shall abate and remedy the property's maintenance violation. And it's further resolved that the public hearing be held at the Village Board at seven P M. on April 25th, 2025.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, excuse me, thank you, Bill. Twenty twenty-five at Village Hall, three twenty-five Hudson Street, pursuant to chapter sixty-one and one twenty of the village code to determine whether this order to evade and remedy the property maintenance violations of the property of Kathy Lynn Sudo and any occupants in ten Wash, at ten Washington Street should be affirmed or modified or vacated. And that the hearing will be held at seven P M., which we've already stated. That this, resolve that this notice be served upon Kathy Lynn Sudo and any undertenants residing in the property of the date, place, and time of the hearing scheduled. And that the village, it's resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing, to said hearings to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for that reminder, Bill.
And I have prepared a public hearing notice for the clerk. We'll get that to you tomorrow.
All right, just some from F Y I. So with respect to our summer camp, as Jim has brought up before in previous meetings, the, let's see, the town swimming pool is closed down for the season. We look for some available places to have the summer camp. Normally we have it at, at the
One of the schools.
One of the schools. None of the schools are available because each one of the schools are having major repairs to their properties, so they were unavailable. Both Phyllis from the town, Phyllis Murphy, and the village met with Camp Olmstead and came to an agreement, and they have offered to have a partial day camp 2025. At Camp Olmstead, the partial day camp will run from Monday through Friday, nine A M. to three P M. June thirtieth to August eighth. The cost is, normally the cost is nineteen hundred and fifty dollars, it's six seven, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And it's, please note that lunch is not provided, the campers must bring nut-free lunches. Registration begins April fourteenth, 2025. There's a one-time fee of seventy-five dollars, non-refundable for registration per child. The registration and payment deadline is June sixteenth. There's parent orientation, and it's mandatory for all first-time camp parents, and they provide a Zoom link. We also have the flyer that's up front in, in Village Hall. So the parent orientation will be on April nineteenth, May eighth, and June third. And camp tours will be given Saturday, March thirteenth, Saturday, April twenty-seventh, Saturday, May eighteenth, and June fifteenth. Does anybody have anything else to add?
It's actually additional hours from what our normal camp had.
It's an additional, extra hour each.
Is it one hour?
Two.
More, right? Two hours.
Two hours. And I know as per Jim, he did a bunch of research and compared these to other municipalities. And...
And other camps.
Other camps, excuse me, other camps. And this is a, a great deal. And they also have a pool, so, which, which I forgot to point out. So please take advantage of that, we'll try to remind you over the next, the next couple, next few meetings, to remind you of the registration deadline. Next up, we have the Good Morning Garden. Bill, did you want to talk to us?
I certainly can, I have not yet seen this document. I am making everyone aware that you are invited to the Cornwall Youth Garden Club's Good Morning Garden, April 19th, 2025, from 11:00 to 1:00 PM at Dunninghugh Farm. There will be a ribbon cutting, songs, planting, and garden play.
Oh, for the.
To kick off the new growing seasons. So this is in the beautiful community garden that's been built at the Dunninghugh Farm. And the youth community garden, the, the Youth Garden Club is an active part of that community garden, and so that's their, their kickoff on April 19th.
Excellent, that's, thank you, Bill. Sorry, before we got that, Garden Club. I also have a, a letter, it's actually an email, from the Cornwall Yacht Club. They have Steve Longinat, who is the fleet captain for the Cornwall Yacht Club, advised me that they would like to, once again, on behalf of the Cornwall Yacht Club, to offer a slip for our fireboat. And he notes that the donation is valued at $2,054. And since 2015, the Cornwall Yacht Club has been providing these slips. And he noted that its accumulated total values over these years is $20,005, $20,000, And he notes that we consider it a privilege to assist our community in this unique manner and look forward to the continued partnership. So we'd like to thank Cornwall Yacht Club for doing this for so many years. And I clarified with Mike, didn't realize this myself, but they've been doing, they did this back in the 90s when we had our first boat, is that correct, Mike? Okay, so thank you very much to the Cornwall Yacht Club. The second thing they're also doing, I'll note, is they're going to put in the pilings for the, for the dock this year due to, due to insurance, insurance issues. It will happen, but the village and the Cornwall Yacht Club are working, working that out to have that done. We're trying to get those docks in and the pilings in as soon as possible.
And I'll have, I'll have something for the board to review that you can act on at the work session on Monday.
Excellent, excellent. FYI, for the village board work session, that is April 14th, next Monday, at 7:00 PM. Our village board business meeting is on April 21st at 7:00 PM. Now, I'll go around the, I'll go around the horn in regards to comments by board members, so. Who do we start? We're starting with Lori Beth. Do you have anything?
Um, no. Nope, no, I, I don't have anything.
Bill?
Congratulations on your first meeting as mayor. I think it went very well. And EV chargers, I think we're getting closer to where they're going to be reaching out to our DPW and to make sure the rest of the board is informed.
I'm glad you brought that up, Bill.
Yes.
Because they're not putting that down where we're gonna.
Near there, near the kayak racks that are proposed.
But further away, you and I need to.
Yes.
All right, we'll, we'll get offline, yes.
They need the drop though, right, Bill?
Yeah, the drop, the drop. The next thing that's expected to happen is that Central Hudson will come and put in the drop and a, and a meter panel. Dave and I had visited the site and he had ruled out a site that was in the middle of the parking lot because you have to get the snowplows through there.
Yeah.
So then the suggestion was to move it to the edge of the parking lot. It's closer to Shore Road at the corner, I can show you a diagram that I.
All right.
Made, a crude one that I sent to, sent to Dave. I was doing that with Dave and Integra, the, the vendor, before we brought you in, just to make sure that we, that they were all on the same page.
All right, all right.
But now the fence isn't intended to move, correct?
Yes, but that's where the kayak racks are, are going to go.
I think it can all fit, I took some photos, I'll send them to you.
Okay.
But I'm happy to.
Very good.
And, oh, and the vendor, and I said, if we have to change things, eh, you know, say 20 feet in any direction, they said it shouldn't be an issue.
Very good.
From the cost perspective.
That's excellent, sorry to cut you off.
No, no, no worries, that was it, I just wanted to say that that's.
Uh, Dave?
Just, I'm not sure if you were given a limit, is there a limit on the summer playground?
Oh, no, no, there was no, I don't believe there was, no. The best part about the summer, well, the best part, it's a.
It's happening, that's the best.
One, that's the best part, it's happening. Two, the, the downside is that, you know, we're not, we're no longer using village youngsters, I'm going to say, who can be camp counselors and that sort of thing, give them the experience because.
We'll get some, right, a first refusal, right?
I think they have about 12 that are going.
To be working.
To be going to Camp Olmstead, yeah.
Great, that's, that's excellent news. And I think this is a great opportunity, this could be a long, this could be a long-term, which would be, which would be excellent, because they're, they're excellent neighbors and this benefits us and it benefits them. So. One of the things I did want to say is, is during the election, when Dave and I sent out our postcard, I used a new, I used a new vendor to make them this year.
Should like Exhibit A?
Yes, and, yes, so. To me not following up on drafts. The, the vendor, the vendor issued, not issued, he created the, our, our postcards. On the back of it, I've done this three, this is my fourth time of doing, on the back of the, the postcard, you put down a sample ballot. Well, and this time, they, with unbeknownst to me, until after Bill called me and received the, the postcard, my name was under mayor, bolded, and somehow Bill's name was under mayor, not bolded. And Bill sent me a text saying, Jim, no matter how much you want me to run for mayor, I'm not going to do it. So I thank you, Bill, for pointing that out. It was not intended, it was a mistake, and it was a mistake on my part in not making sure that the latest draft was the one that they received. Because I was more concerned about the front of the postcard, which had absolutely nothing on it except our picture, so. So, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And congratulations again to Bill and Dave for being reelected. I'm looking forward to a good two years and getting a lot of things done. So. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes.
Steve offered you?
We should start offering.
Oh, really? Did you tell?
Or maybe we should charge them, maybe.
He wasn't that old.